But, in large, uh, this price, because it's being sourced up. And, they are, they had, uh, they had them put up, my money, put up the S to a shop. Close, and then Terry and me did that source of it. So, you can't tell us, or if I were a kid, didn't make that. Some, some already wrote something. He didn't have to, you know, they weren't even worth, he didn't stop. No, he called his cousin, and he goes to Lowe's and buys two thousand dollars of this labalite floor. And, they show up, none of them know how to put it down. And, so as it wound up, after he helped the things inside that I don't want to get into. After he owes the box over to China himself, he called me and said, "Would you come up here, boss? I'll cut this." "Supposed to come there and install it by next Thursday, Thursday comes. Would you take all this material back to Lowe's for me?" And he'd already gone on, "Oh, I had to go get my trailer next week." Catching my business, load it up, park it, before he had messed up. He'd already put down some of the stuff that he put on the floor. I said, "Then where does this take it, when we borrow all this stuff?" "I can buy it." So, Terry and I, until I get a hundred and five degrees, tried to negotiate with somebody at Lowe's, take the material back to the orders, uh, all night. Yeah, I did good. I used his negotiating skills and I took it every bit back. One box of the floor and then he drove it.
So he got full credit back?
Well, the part that he used to waste it up, you know, it was about nineteen hundred dollars, he got back seventeen hundred something credit, his back through his credit card, so.
I'm calling you next time, I do something silly.
Well, yeah, and, and, and it just didn't include carpet and two bedrooms. And it, Phil, it couldn't be clean enough to, oh, this has been a run out, and you don't know, I, I prefer to get some mid-price, let's get some carpet. I said, "If he, installer, if it doesn't buy, if that turns out all right, you go back and tell them." Okay, well.
Funny, a funny story about the floor, and, um, Sonny had a new house, this about four or five years ago, and the upstairs room was unfinished, and so he was getting it finished, and he was finishing it, you know, for a, a family's room upstairs. I bought this bamboo floor, and Dad, it's the toughest stuff he's ever seen, it's just wonderful. It's just great, and I said, "Really?" He said, "Yeah, let me show you how wonderful it is." And he took this handle, and he gets the bamboo and it broke into seventeen.
Oh!
I said, "That's really tough stuff."
Well, it's more than one guy's bamboo, not a person's. And if you get it right, that's it, well, yeah, I think you get it just right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I said, "Well, you've got to pop the hood, you've got to roll out now, you've got to get this thing, where your bags will prove, because they're pretty long, and they may have, you've got to win it, yes, sir." There must be a year for Terry to get that bad, and I wonder the same thing.
Same thing?
You're going to go on because you like. You like, well, the closing attorneys were pretty swift and soon, and, uh, he got to meet them, and they were going to remember being, riding on me, and I, I gave him some tips, but can't get from them. He said, "I already heard the boss, say, hop me up." And I was there, and you were about to ask, and they gave me the end address and all that.
That was on Facebook, Malcolm, you know, this is hell.
Hmm?
That was on Facebook.
Is that right?
Yeah, yeah. You must be such, uh...
I, I was on Facebook.
Yeah, huh?
I bet you didn't manage to keep me informed.
It was.
I bet we can get the fire and the fire and the commissary out of my building, it's probably incredible, it's lit.
Paul, we thank the Red Knoll Billions much again, the place was a workshop, and the place was a special meeting. We can help our citizens, and the place we made this thing is just a station of thought. Thank you now for what you've done thus far, and we think that what you're going to do is a good one. It's the action, especially now, either saying my place, in it.
Man, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a special meeting, that will be going tonight, so number three is a total of the agenda, and I have an item that I need to add, um, and Daddy of, um, the board who approved, Mr. Bishop asking Mr. Reed, Attorney General Madison, to assist him with the cord pill involving Mr. Brooks and the Peter Allen property.
I move we approve the agenda of this, please.
We've got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Motion, Terry. Um, now I see that we've got the one item here for the final one, and I've been rapping my mind, but things like, there was something, yeah, Conrad, if you recall, was there something else to do with, something we were going to do so we could go ahead and move on and...
There was an insurance issue, uh, that, uh, we need to get that settled up.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, that's about the fire.
Um, but was there anything else that we talked about last time, if we wanted a special meeting for?
I think there was a discussion of, um, instructing the attorney to move forward with preparing a resolution for the fee for the incinerator.
Right, right. We can add that to the agenda.
But I don't know if we were ready to move forward with that until we discussed it during the workshop. I think that was the, the quandary, because that fee is within the fee schedule for, um, for solid waste fees.
Okay, all right.
Was it something that we need, that we need to do to done it? I, well, because we can either something contingent on, or, or something like that while we're in this special meeting?
Um, I think that, from my recollection, the board is eager to move forward with, um, allowing contractors to bring debris to the, um, incinerator site. And I know that the fee that has been discussed, um, has been a certain amount, but I think comrades did state that if you prepare the resolution for the July eight meeting, you could leave the amount blank, and it could be set during that meeting, if...
And we're supposed to need...
Sir?
That's thirty, yeah, and we can prepare that when we come, if we put that on the list, we can prepare, and if anything, we can decide a little bit.
Okay, okay. And then ask them in the next agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Now, they're saying, you know, two out of the eight, that, everybody's saying, that, that my phone will be here. Yeah, it'll be real hard on them, you know.
How would I use? So, it was, the question was, do we need to add that to the agenda for the board to instruct the, the tonight's agenda?
Right, okay. It can, it can be bad, that is, uh, uh, if you end up along the four hours, actually, so.
Okay, so you want to go ahead and add it for now, for that today?
Yes, ma'am. Do we need a motion or a handover?
Uh, I think we need a motion, the other.
Then start, then start, just clear it out.
You can have a look.
Okay, maybe we have, and motion by Commissioner Beaufort, the second vice, Commissioner Murphy?
Uh, Paul, we already approved this agenda, we need to go back and approve it. It hasn't took...
You can, you can say that, you can go back and say, uh, make a motion to re...
Mend?
To amend the agenda.
Well, I make a motion, we amend the initiative to include one official out, give instructions to Mr. Bishop regarding the resolution, as the fees on the, uh, the earnings fee, at the, uh, solid waste, where, where the contract... I said.
Okay.
Okay.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Page, second vice, Commissioner Page. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Motion, Terry. We can go ahead and do that now. We'll go do it now. Is it a four?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, for the fireworks.
Yeah, okay, okay. So, um, we did receive the approved permit for operation for an outdoor, uh, fireworks display, as defined by the fee. However, upon review of the packet, we realized that the certificate of insurance was not, did not name the board as additional insurer. And there was also a question about the description on the certificate of insurance. It states long care services contractors. So, our fire chief did reach out to Mr. Faulkner and advised her that this, this, tell us, this was not sufficient for what we need. We always ask that the board relist it as an additional insurer, a million dollars of coverage for occurrence. So, as of right now, the insurance is not sufficient for the event that they want to hold on, on county property. Now, if this is being held, if this packet was for an event to be held on private property, that would, we would not be having this discussion.
Okay, well, just, um, if I want to do this on due on the six, I believe, and we will not meet again until due on the eighth, then we can't have this contention apart from them, uh, providing the proper insurance. Anything else that we need is for them. So, does anyone...
I'll, I'll make that note, please, I approve this contention of getting the proper insurance issue resolved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Page, second vice, Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Motion, Terry. So, maybe, I, I, I'm sure she'll get back with you one way or another. Yeah, okay. Is there anything else now for this, this special meeting?
My, my, authorized, this, this is to the power, Tommy Reeves, to assist me in the Brooks case.
In, in the Brooks case, we can, I'm going to take a walk. Um, number one, uh, it's supposed to, up to this point, not have been by an attorney. And just how, how times just, uh, that, just, say the least, it's hard to interpret, and it's not, my view, it's not proper. District Court of Appeals sometimes moves over backwards for pro se, no, most people are like him. Um, Tommy Reeves is a board certified appellate lawyer, this is another lawyer, I wouldn't have any problem, but I need some help with this, to, to, with regard to hopefully some being successful in this. Also, another issue is, you know, uh, sale of two out of seven. And Brooks has filed a motion to stay the sale, and we're trying to get a hearing before the judge on that. If he does grant to stay, that's not all bad, because if he doesn't grant to stay, and the sale goes forward, no one's going to bid on something that's on appeal, that would be economic, nothing to do. Um, on the other hand, with respect to, uh, the, the motion to stay, I haven't agreed to the stay, because, you know, the price point, I, I don't agree with him on anything, you know. So, hopefully, we're going to have a hearing on that. So, if he gives call things, you know, the sale is going to go on, say you don't know about it, no one lets them on to know if in fact it stays granted, so somebody calls you about it. Also, there was a, you know, um, other complaint, they want the place condemned, and so, but, but what we're trying to do, again, is, I thought the best thing to do was just, the board was just running now, whether that's the correct thing to do, I don't know, you know, I, I still think it was, but, um, we'll have to find out. So, um, it's a quiet mark, but we're going to get through it one way or another.
Kind of question, um, at the end of the day, if we all do, I guess the rain and sun, if you're lacking a better word, can we then sit down for a time to see?
You got, uh, ask the court to reserve jurisdiction on term penalties in the final judgment. And the answer to that is yes, you know, it's good, um, and if, you know, it comes back and we want, even if it comes, say, they, they reverse it and remand it for another, we can still ask for it, so. Now, let me tell you a little bit about the term penalties, when you ask for a term penalty. If you get it, of course, it adds to the, um, the judgment, just because you got the dozen, I mean, so it's like that, so.
I mean, you might not get paid.
I get, we did.
We may not get paid.
Yeah, I get paid, I try to keep, uh, scholars paying me for this, at my, at my record, it's reasonable, costs a little bit more, but I'm going to negotiate with him on that. Um, but, you know, I don't charge him near the hourly rate that I charge, you know, we didn't like this, or like this kind of, um, and, and I believe that number one, but y'all keep me, that's my thing. And number two, that, this is my county, we appreciate you, and, uh...
I'm going to go ahead and notice.
Yeah, and check other, um, other counties, because, you know, all...
Well, I appreciate what you do and your dedication to the board and to other counties, and, um, we sure want to keep you.
Well, I want to keep y'all, too, I, I, you know, I mean, there doesn't, day goes by, I'm going to ask many, many, many times. I don't know.
You get that roundhouse here, huh?
I, I'm going to, are you ready for a hook?
Yeah.
I've noted that we, authorized, this is this, excuse the terms, Attorney Tommy Reeves, to assist in the Brooks, for closure.
Is it for closure or the field? The field, okay.
The field, yeah. I mean, the whole, whatever.
For closure is not part of the field.
Oh, yeah, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's what these feel, like, okay, we have a motion and a second, second vice, Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
Aye, ma'am.
Motion, Terry.
Not counting any to approve, which only came in the schedule, but due on the eighth, so that's fee schedule, because he's been doing it here, so we can get him to say that every day.
Yeah, so is there a motion for, um, the, um, go ahead with the fee schedule? Mr. Bishop, go ahead with the fee, preparing the fee schedule, for the resolution, now?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I'm getting it right. Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize, return, clear the resolution, or make that, uh, solid waste resolution
At least, we have one.
For, uh, the contractor to burn, that, that, that is burned out.
We have a motion about Commissioner Page, second vice, Commissioner Murphy. Any further questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, ma'am.
All opposed, say aye. Motion, Terry. I think we'll leave that on. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh-huh.
This is...
We're going to...
Okay, I got it.
With our motion, my commissioner, uh, who made the motion?
Yes.
She, she made the motion to adjourn, or does that sound right?
Make second.
Second vice, Commissioner Murphy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Motion, Terry. We will go to the next, into, um, regular workshop, and, um, first on the agenda is the prayer, and Commissioner Page, please, please, express this, please, on one, okay?
Paul, we thank you again, um, can you, please, thank you, uh, the citizens of your country again. Yes, you continue to rest, and only you can move. We think for what you've done thus far, and we think for what you're going to do with it. Yes, this is my, in it.
Now, any more? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three, the board to discuss pest control services for county buildings.
This is a contact for pest control services on, I think, the June third agenda, um, that we tabled, um, on the agenda, because there were some questions about which county differences, which county office buildings utilized pest control services, and if we obtained quotes from, for every building that we stood out. And it was discovered through investigation that it seemed that different offices were handling this a little differently. So, what we've done is prepared a list of all of our county offices to use pest control services, and we've conducted this survey, they want to continue, and whether or not they want termite treatment, and we are going to ask for new quotes for these services. Once the quotes are collected, then we will bring a new contract to the board for execution.
One contract, with a blanket, with all...
And the purpose for that is just so we can have, uh, pricing guarantees for the, the length of the contract.
Probably get a little bit of price on that, too.
That, uh, we'll, we'll read, we'll read this, yes, ma'am, yeah, yeah.
And the five percent local pepper, you'll still be in that.
Yeah.
Because in the past, I've had several, but, you know, when I get on the list, if you consider the special trouble, uh, at this time, you bid on it, and if you're local, you get five percent, uh...
Consideration.
Consideration there. I wouldn't want to go into a contract now, I don't think it's very moving, five years, in that moment, what we're...
I believe it's a, a three-year contract. And, 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 and that's more to hold the prices than, than anything.
One thing.
Yeah, um, I'm pretty sure that we notify all local, um, exterminators...
Absolutely.
Because they know that they have an opportunity to bid, and it's clear now, everybody's bidding on the exact same thing.
Yeah, yeah, okay, sounds good.
Do you need to run an ad on that?
I would think so, we, uh, we had a good response last, the last time we...
Some people feel our website, anyway, on, uh, uh...
No, well, no, sir, because this is just quotes, it's not a formal bid process, because it's on, it's not a high dollar amount.
Well, I'll, I can't suggest, there's not a finite number of local, just people are a lot, to do that, but, make sure they all get it all. Work for me.
Okay, I would like for the board to discuss the procedure session, Paul.
This is just for the board's information, um, of items that we have addressed or completed since the last repeated name session. We're almost with the list, there's only five, everything's been addressed.
Are you going, or you guys go over it for us, you just watch, like, the question or, it's, it's up to you, I don't know, sort of, the board wishes. Why don't you tell us what, you know, why don't you read this for a deal?
Okay, well, I think that, um, most of it itself is explanatory. There are some items, um, that we have not, that we have not completed, um, under roads resurfacing or paving. One of the instructions was to resurface any other revenue sources to fund rates, and have not completed that. Um, under restore apps, um, I was, I wasn't quite sure on the direction, but there was a suggestion to narrow the property list down to three options. We have done that, but in the interim, we have been meeting with some of the stakeholders, and we have some concerns about whether or not we'll receive permission, um, to partner with S E P C. Um, and we have some concerns about permitting from D E T. So, we may need to either adjust our, um, our S E P, the items in our S E P, or we may come back to the board and ask for additional options. So, I don't believe that's a staffing decision, I would like to get guidance from S E P. Um, we met with them last week, and then once we have something in writing regarding partnering with them for, um, to instruct a boat rampage, paying a quote, I mean, so we can get an answer from them, we have been hesitant with other projects.
Do you have a timeline from there?
Last week, um, I was told that hopefully by the end of this week, they'll have an answer. Um, now, they've been somewhat reluctant to give us an answer, um, because, and, and we've been passionate about our, our projects with. So, it may take, um, a face to another face, a face meeting, but we, we feel like we want to be diligent as far as looking at those possibilities.
Now, I'm saying, for instance, if, um, if they come back with a favorable response, what will be the next step?
Then we would submit grant, uh, grant applications for feasibility study and survey. Um, for, uh, um, I think there were two projects identified, one was paying a quote, and then the second choice was, um, Dr. Heck's authority. Um, and if one of those is taken out of the mix, what I'd like to do is come back to the board and advise the board, here's where we are, and get correction from the board as far as needing to work with. Because I think the insurance was fairly clear.
Now, we can see, of all the men out there, I know, um, I'm hearing different opinions from the public on certain things associated with the, and things like that, and sometimes, there, there are concerns and different opinions. And all of them, so it might be something, when the time is right, uh, it might be proper to accept it then, I don't know, but, uh, I can't believe I, I would be the only commissioner, uh, giving feedback. I don't believe you are, yeah.
Uh, for some feedback, not that I agree with the, uh, you know, it certainly, certainly, of, of something.
Well, what I would say is, what we have to keep in mind, if the board wishes to explore, um, the construction of, of, well, partnering with S E P to construct a boat rampage, codes, is that we will have to mitigate any, any, um, dragging through seagrass. And we can use our, our top three funds for that, but I don't know what the impact of that will be. So, that's added to the cost of the project. So, no matter what, I believe we're going to have to, we'll be forced to amend our state expenditure plan to add, to reallocate how we think some of those payments would be spent. We, we have a small amount in construction, and most of it is in property acquisitions. Well, if you look at the cost of mitigating through seagrass, I, you know, we will have to reallocate those funds anyway. So, I, I believe that we may have to make a change to our state expenditure plan, no matter which way we go. But we can do that.
That's obvious, I mean, it's a lot of work to change this, I'm sure, but it can be done, well... We had another thing come on the market this week, Pittsburgh come back on the market.
Which one?
Pittsburgh, the boat rampage is up in Pittsburgh.
It is?
Yeah, it came back on the market this week, and they, they were high ground very good at the park.
In the boat ramp?
Yep, in the boat ramp, they're supposed to be getting, just for one of their information on this week sometime.
Well, the deadline's already passed, should add property to the list, unless we can redo the S E P.
And we're gonna have to do that.
I mean, that wouldn't be a big.
Wouldn't be a big issue.
It is. But that's, that was a, that was one, people kept asking me why we didn't get Fish Creek long ago, and get Fish Creek. You know, it's because we got a higher ground on the boat ramp, just like when we got a higher ground on the boat ramp, yeah. Yeah, just, people keep asking that question, like, the longest one's been millions of dollars building a channel, build a boat ramp on. When you already got, you got boat ramps, you can always buy, you know, I mean, a lot, a lot of people talking about it.
And you know, sometimes, just the, um, solid population, and I guess, S V C will be, um, I'd like to, not one day, uh, what kind of, um, analysis they would have in terms of, if we put in a several more boat ramps, because, um, you know, have that many more boats coming in, would it harm our solid, or would it be okay? I'd really like for them to give a simple, uh, opinion on that if they could.
Well, and we may reach out to U S I P S, um, Doctor Geiger is a specialist on solid, and, um, he may be able to give us an opinion on that. Um, I know that one of, um, if the world, I concerned was, um, just the thought of putting a boat ramp with that much associated traffic in a man-entire area, that it, you know, they weren't quite as enthusiastic, um, about the effect of that. They also stated concerns about if we could afford to pave the roads, um, and again, we can use our retro act funds. Um, they did state some concerns about if we could afford to operate a large boat ramp. Uh, and I think all of their questions are valid, um, so we may have some, some difficulty, um, persuading them to agree with us, but I, I really was not surprised if they voiced some concerns.
Okay, anything else on here that you'd like to learn?
Um, I'm sure, we get, like, the board, like, a lot of boat ramps we need operated. Do you have any of that, these, these boat ramps, do that will become a part?
I would assume so, I would assume that we'd be consistent with the operation of our other boat ramp, which is five dollars for a day and a half, and, um.
Twenty two, thirty of that. In Fish Creek, how many, how many boats people in one time? Fish Creek, that's a one-lane boat ramp?
It is a one-lane.
And parking, that's, that was, you know, at least twenty five thirty people a day in the boat use.
Yeah, it was, it was taking a lot of pressure.
A lot of pressure, yeah.
And, and, and let's keep these, we have another, like.
If you had some spring water, and you had some on the Fish Creek, uh, that took a lot of pressure, a lot of.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate what our chairman brought up, is that there's a finite resource out here, scotch, law and college, there's bale trout and red fish and everything, but those waters out there, brung to the people, don't they come around? And, and it makes it hard to get your boat in, to get these people to come in today. And if we don't provide a boat ramp, or more boat ramps, more of the sparks, then all you gotta do is go to the next county over, put your boat in and run over there again. Yeah, I would think too loud of a boat. And there's a certain segment of the population, and I might be moved in, I feel selfish. And if you go out fishing, I see community boats, I can't speak when I go to, oh, God. But, but that's a selfish thought, I think, you gotta look at the, it's a public asset out there.
Well, I can give you an example, um, just, just, it seems, some of the posts on social media, um, some of our posts, was that last weekend was wild, um, and there was possibly not the strongest S V C presence we would like to see, um, for the safety of people. But I know when we discussed the salt seminar, it was discussed by the S V C officers, that they were forced out there, and they have no other resources, so, and maybe something to, to present them, take into consideration. Um, you know, if we find the resources to expand that, that doesn't mean state agencies can expand their resources there.
Well, maybe we ought to rethink this whole retro act money that we thought we were out in, for more assets than gone. That possibly may be in there, or we think good.
Well, and it may work itself out through the feasibility study portion of, of the program. Um, if the feasibility study bring up these concerns with toning and, you know, seagrass mitigation, it.
And my friend has can't put one out there anymore.
Sure, it may not be something.
Come back, we may have come back, recently, bringing the lines in that nation, I was at the nation, just for one of the, bring between the lines of what S V C and what, you know, D E T said. It, it didn't sound good, I mean, it just, they, they're not the boss, they had to go back to the bosses, and they had to do a lot of talking, you know. But it just, you know, that, the, the birdwatchers, the kayakers, it's, uh, uh, so I see all that coming to conversation, you know, they had just much life, see their, their boats, you know, I mean, they.
My, my, you're not cutting me off here, my thinking right now is, don't stay with this claim, with these two properties, leave out anybody. And if we, if, if they don't cut out, uh, go, go through the feasibility study process, I probably know they both are. And, uh, then we can add a few more to the list, or close the list and find another use of them.
Well, I, you know, I, there, there's just a lot to consider, um, you know, we do have to consider natural resources, um, and, and then you've got, um, your tourism, which, you know, uh, the chamber, we promote tourism, and it's just a business. The businesses do well, but there's gotta be a balance, and that's where, I'm, I'm not sure what that balance is, but, you know, if you complete everything we have in the business, then it won't come to the business.
They want it even better.
Exactly, so, 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 there's gotta be the right balance, I just don't know what that balance is right now. But I, you know, it's first, like, yeah, all these boat ramps, and that's good, but it's still maybe like things do, but, you know, I think we've scrubbed down a little bit now, and we're starting thinking a little bit more in terms of the impact of that, and the negatives, the positives, and then, um, you know, and I've had conversations about how long would we maintain such an area as Hagan's, kind of, what was it, two or three hundred acres? How, we can't maintain what we have now, so, you know, we, we still have a lot of thinking to do, and a lot of things can wind down, in my opinion. Um, but I'm not saying I'm for it yet, see, man, I'm just talking.
Oh, be careful, we're gonna.
Let's go for the mentioned, those things, I think we'll eliminate, so, really often there.
Yeah, I don't think about calling a D B saying she's against business, she's against, she's against boat ramps, and I'm not, I'm not. I'm just telling them.
I'll go call them, just for the fact.
I'm just talking, you know, I'm just repeating something a lot more. Okay, anything else we need to consider on here?
The only other item I'd like to draw your attention to is under culvert, ditch maintenance.
For what?
It is on the first page. I did not, uh, comment on it, and I still have, that we have applied for a river grant through Flunner River Water Management District, and that is focused on culvert maintenance and replacement, so I'm hoping that if we obtain these, these grant funds, that this will, um, this will help us with the issues with ditches and culverts. Because that's, that's what we submitted the grant request, um, based upon.
How much can you grant for?
Yeah, we got one item on, that's phase one. Instruct the grant director, search for a furthest grant for additional boat ramps. Do we want to eliminate this, what, what happened back on the six eight? Did we actually instruct?
No.
We didn't instruct the grant advisor to go get furthest for another boat ramp there?
No, sir, I think what happened on scene eighteen was that the, the chairman, um, asked each commissioner to bring any projects forward that they would like consideration for.
Okay.
I think that came up during the discussion of, um, the retro act funds and, and how to rank those properties. And that, that, that just may have just been some, and, and I think some of the.
I love the deer, so I just wanna catch up.
Yes, sir.
Well, on the, on that item about vaping in county facilities, I just got something from the governor's office today. He signed a bill that prohibits for any county facility. Did you get, y'all get it?
Yes.
I'll get it seen in the city on the way home.
Is that, I didn't hear.
The governor signed the, the bill that prohibits vaping in public buildings?
Uh, I think that.
Yeah, it's, but this is for vaping at our car, so is it, is it public buildings, or does it include, um?
I want to go, I'll have to look at it, have a stat and something, I'll look at it and see, but I know it's a building, so we're gonna need to hook the signs up, but I know it's in, um, some deals.
Do you have a statute number?
I did, we took it in my office, I have to get it.
Vaping is that, when you smoke that?
Well, it's not cigarette, you see that, half the people walking around, well, uh, have we found a sign that, yeah, enough, enough eighty nine hours?
We had been holding the advertisement for that ordinance until we received feedback from the judge and the sheriff. I, I finally got feedback today that they were okay with the ordinance, so I asked them to go ahead and advertise. And I also reached out to the Department of Health, and they're thrilled, um, that we are considering an ordinance, um, against vaping.
First, a call during the summer, um, the last couple days, when, when people sitting around us vaping the whole time, it was awful.
So that should be advertised starting next week, I would assume, so it should be coming up on the one of the July, unless, unless, anyway, if that is the, say, if the statute.
I'll, I'll just, I'll be that tomorrow, I'm sure, it's a, a completely already signed, it's the mayor could have it in the plot, the bench is the bar. But I'll get it seen tomorrow.
The county, I, I have a resident statute, that, that are the bills, should be a statute. Um, that's not, it, it doesn't pro, you see, we're prohibiting, uh, local government from, um, passing an ordinance regarding vaping.
No, I think it's, um, the bills there, it's, it's prohibited, until, uh, public buildings.
Okay, all right, I think we'll be all right with it. Okay, so on, on the, I need to come in there.
Okay, we're going to go to the Board to, to continue discussions regarding solid waste operations. So before Gary comes up, if, if, if I may, um, Gary provided something for us. So for the board's information, a, a list of the materials that we haul, haul to offilla. And when, he really did a great job breaking everything out, of what type of debris that we handle, um, what we haul, what we don't haul, what we sell, and we just wanted to all be on the same page at the same time during these discussions. So we have provided that to the board, and I also would like to, to clarify in our discussion, I know that there was a recent article in the paper that discussed that part of our issue is that we accept C and D. And that, you know, it appears to be a large amount. But if I can ask the board to consider that, when we initiated these discussions, we pointed out that the increase in the expenditures for solid waste were not from tipping fees. Tipping fees have been pretty steady for the last few years. The increase is from personnel costs. Personnel costs have risen about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the last ten years. And that's just the normal people get raises, we bumped up some salaries for, um, for all employees at one point. Health insurance has gone up, retirement has gone up, and for a large department like solid waste, that happened in past. So I don't want, and it gives the public to feel like we're not managing our roll-off sites properly. I, I just want everyone to, to consider that our costs, our operating costs have naturally risen over the last ten years. And that our revenue has remained a top about the same over there.
Look, we called, we have the board meeting, the topic we misled about what college we bring in our expenditure. And you remember, not too many months ago, that we made two different changes to the budget, where we were asked to fund money for all the tipping fees, because that had been under budgeted.
Yes.
Now, I think this, from what you told, it was under budgeted there to cover the personnel costs, which had some normal, like, they got, we got paid books first. So having all that, I could put a little bit of spin on some of those.
Well, I kind of disagree that we are, we can get large amounts of C and D at times. But I don't think that is the, the sole cause for our issues with the solid waste fund. I think it's several things, but I don't believe that's the only cause.
Well, what we need, I, I'm a firm believer, you don't need to collect more taxes from the people, that's what you need. You know, there's no need to tax, that's just another fifty-dollar fee, so you can put a whole million dollars in certain, sinking funds somewhere. How many students need return stocks, make solid waste a function? Hundred thousand, two hundred thousand?
Well, I believe I said previously that an increase of a hundred thousand dollars would be, uh, would certainly help. I think any increase in revenue would help, that the issue that I think we're facing is, and this is, this is completely up to the board. If the board wishes to utilize once-in-sales tax funds to purchase capital, that's your decision. But what you're doing is augmenting the solid waste fund with once-in-sales tax money, so we can replace trucks and containers and compactors and things like that. And I think what's compounding the problem with solid waste is because we haven't had extra money to meet our capital needs in the last few years.
Right.
So, um, that causes our operations to go up when we have, you know, trucks with excessive miles on it. That increases your repair maintenance, and, um, so, I would say any increase in revenue would be helpful.
And then we had to get the, the once-in-sales tax money, we really didn't need it, we wouldn't have to take as much as they gave us. I was a little bit heartburn about using that once-in-sales tax money for the normal operations. You know, what you're doing is you call it capital, trucks, but it's sort of subsidized in one of our departments. And, and, well, I'm near enough from citizens, you know, and I, I asked the book, you know, like a student, what do you think? And they said, well, I will pay you that for me. I am not for the board changing the solid waste percent, but if you close these loopholes, what loopholes? I'm talking about the C and D, the cash, the limbs and stuff that you take, they even charge that. And these hunting camps, and these R A's, the fashions, not so much the hunting camps, they need to pay the same thing as I. they need to pay the same thing as I did. Why should you increase about tipping fees? So, I can be able to get a business of third of a ride, let's say, to their RV. And that's what I'm hearing from folks now. And, and they got a point. And they can say, oh, my hunting camp or my RV, I don't have one bag of trash a week. Well, I have an old house to feed a rabbit. Some weeks I don't even have one bag of trash, and I've paid the whole of them. So, I can support going up on RVs and hunting camps. As far as this board wants to go along with it, I can ship, talk to them, we can figure out a way to do it. But I can't change the hundred and forty dollars. Now, that's bottom line.
Well, and if I may-
And I'll work with the board, I'll be a team player.
Just something for the board's consideration is that I don't know how many RVs and hunting camps we had ten years ago. But I know the last time I checked, that we had over two thousand-
Twenty-one hundred, is that a little?
Yes, um, RVs, you know, sites that pay the one-third. If you took those and you charged them the full one-fourty, like everybody else paid, would that make up your differential, that a hundred thousand is your option? We got, that was more than me.
That would take care of, and we would not have to raise that.
That's crazy.
But, you know, I feel like I've gotten mixed messages. Because, you know, I, I hear one meeting, when I'm talking about yard trash, because I've been adamant that people not be, um, have to pay for their yard trash. And then, oh, no, it's not yard trash, it's C and D, C and D is our problem, C and D is our problem. Then I hear today, well, no, not C and D, it's more of, um, and, you know, our spats and stuff. I, I'm getting mixed messages on a little bit confused.
Well, I will say it's a complicated issue. So, I just wanted to make sure that we remember that it's not just one issue. I think it's a combination of the four things. I think C and D is a problem, um, that we don't really have a way, Gary, I don't think, to measure this C and D, because we don't have separate containers for C and D.
Well, then, since what you mean, that we need to have separate containers, and we really shouldn't have contamination, because when we pay contaminated stuff to green, how much is it? Before you take a mix of bunch of stuff up there.
Fifty dollars, I could give a seven dollar rebate, that's four or three dollars, but we have to pay this. And it's, it's, and I'm, I'm, I'm learning, Gary. Uh, we've got one attendant, Air Two Blue, I was taking my garbage out. And if he's down here at the compactor, compactor garbage, he's setting, lays, puts garbage in there. He can't be up on the hill. Guy comes by with a load of stuff, with black limbs on top. And he says, well, that goes to number three. Well, he can't run up there to number three and watch him put it all in there. And down in the bottom of that load of limbs, he's like, I have one bag of garbage. Or a bunch of fresh chicken chicks up forward, well, we can throw that in there, that's mixed. And if it's mixed, you're gonna pay the fifty dollars, right here?
That's cool.
Now, if somehow or other, we can check the yard trash. And not getting, educating folks, don't bring it in here mixed. I'm having a problem not having a taste of that, but I don't hate, I don't hate it for that. And another point I want to make is this, I've kind of put myself in a position. I'm a roll-off attendant, let's say, Air Two Blue. And I've got a man coming in here with a big old trailer load of stuff, what is it, limbs or C and Ds? And the board said, well, Dixie County, if it's, if it's, uh, if it's mixed, contaminated, we'll say. They're talking about, what, sixty or seventy dollars?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five per ton.
It is contaminated.
All right, now, we don't have canoes out here at all our roll-off sites. And you all out there, Gary, with a big old trailer full of stuff, all the way we measured is by box. And you count these people who've been dumping it for free for as long as I've been on this board. So, I made today, they let us go up to a hundred fifty dollars. We calculated, we linked each other tons of high, and that's all that, divided by twenty-seven, we do it by the yard. Uh, they're gonna start cutting your roll-off people. And I figure for them, because they do a way a little good job out of our roll-off site. I hate for them to have to go through with all that. And then when they start cussing and cussing Gary and their roll-off people, really gonna get after that. If they make some deal, if you care, you're gonna get a lot of calls, I'm gonna get them, we're all gonna get them, gonna get it down the car. One plan is, is when you try to do change, it causes consternation, folks get accustomed to doing it one way. And, uh, I ain't played it through this hunting camp deal. And that's going to make a lot of people mad. But, you, you need to see, you went back, there's gonna be two hundred people down the road mad at us. But, take the pause. You got some on the camp, I said, my day, you got some on the camp for them. Well, I just- They're out there going, yeah. Well, I've talked to some of them, and I've talked to, uh, to the president of the Four Rivers, some of them, give you nothing. Give us good friends. Thank you, those of them, not letting me see you, it's not a statement. And he said, won't bother me, I spend more money than the increase in the one-third up to a hundred percent. Don't care if it bothers my grandchildren. Go ahead and do it, you gotta do it for me. And then on the other hand, you're very next door to the next camp though, that I'm calling the board, y'all go here to me about this.
You talk charmed?
Charmed, I'm charmed, I like when I'm charmed and talking. And I said, I want to work it out, just put this company. And then, then about, like, about all of them in situations up there, and you've got their own hunting camps? Well, I'll say this, I'm not there coming to talk, but my hunting camp, don't take, don't even think of a roll-off site of yours, okay? And that's Nova John County charges for a roll-off, uh, hunting camp, let's say, just started, I checked a few years ago. Most people on the east side of the bay, most are charging them, they can't even get to a roll-off, they got to outsource it. But anyway, I don't, the, the, uh, the debris, I take mine back upon, that doesn't, that doesn't want to affect me. But I, I want to go to waste products, don't you hear? And that crossroads, all my rubbish I have, I want to put one bin, and I'll take care of mine, as long as, I don't know, I'm talking, I'm, four, because six of them want separated, so they won't have to use the waste product, okay? But then, you see, one of the others, you know? But I'll work at it, but I would just tell y'all, I, I, anyway, the hunting camps is, I saw a roll-off like Gary knows this. It's a, it's a real roll-off out today. And I asked, right, how many tons do you have? He said, I have all the six tons, of where it come from. He said, talk, not call them, the parents of the six tons on that big truck going. But I'd be dearly roll-off out of there. Here come a cousin, he's a Mount Campbell, of, of, around us, that's us, right? He went, went to the bottom, he didn't find. He's a mountain, yeah. There's some hanging with you there, but I'm not gonna push, give what he can need to at all.
We appreciate that.
Take myself out. That's one way, and then I'm gonna be quiet, I'm talking too much for long. If there were some way that I could identify a hunting camp RV as a hunting camp and not charge them, I'd have a problem. It's the hunting camps in Cedar Island, and you know, big mess, getting every other dude's shelter, and these people live there all the time. They have this much garbage going to dump, as I do at my house here, you know? I don't know anyway, you say, don't charge hunting camps, then every RV turns into a hunting camp. Well, my RV is an hunting camp, it's down near the beach, but one morning I got one of them.
Well, it seems like this, if I'm not mistaken, and that ordinance was have, that it includes, included fish camps as well, that it not without-
I, I don't know. I don't know, we gotta come up with an, you know, a final affidavit that not using the roll-off site, can you be exact?
Well, you got, they, they, and I'll be at the beach, if I was there, I'd say, where's my fishing camp? If they're not going to charge hunting camps, then I've got fish camp right here, just right there, it's got some little bar. So, I think you gotta be consistent. But all, the, uh, the, uh, hunting camp, they don't know where to roll off here. But they take it dramatically, still on, still on fish.
No, he saw that, that wasn't hunting camp.
It didn't start, it didn't, it didn't hit it, because he told me it cost him a lot more money a month, because they see them, he saw them, they're gonna back those things.
He put a fine on that.
Yeah.
But anyway, I, it's a fellow and I appreciate it, you know, it's, it's, well-
Well, what is, what is the issue in terms, is it C and D? How much, how much percentage of the problem is C and D? Because, and I've already talked a lot about C and D, you showed some pictures, I've talked a lot about C and D. Now, I'm thinking all this time, C and D is our biggest problem. Now, tell me, how much is it?
With budgets, you're living on, we're short on money on the budget. If you're creating, I don't know where you, uh, where the money would come from to run the budget. The reason we focus on that is because on your C and D and household, not, not garbage, household couches, chairs. If, last year, you paid out over a hundred and forty-eight thousand in tipping fees, just on that, on the C and D and couches, chairs, all that. And on the debris, all of the incinerators, basically, was, if you did four dollars and nine, ninety cents for giving yards, that was about eighty grand there. So, between all of them, you're at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars that the county paid out for, uh, basically tipping fees and yard debris burners. So, it's almost, you know, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
And I think that, the reason that's focused was, I found in on C and D. It's because part of the issue that Gary and his vote identified is that people would bring multiple tray, multiple loads, one after the other, after the other, after the other. And that, that was something that Gary identified, that's an easy fix. I mean, our personnel costs are what they are.
Right.
And, you know, I don't feel like we can reduce staffing, and that is going to increase pretty much every year.
Probably, I'll pay them the, yeah, they work for me.
So, C and D is a problem with residents, because if you found all the refrigerator, stuff, whatever, and then you factor commercial, this is two sides, commercial, which, you know, we use it rest of the lot. So, well, and this is, just to clarify, refrigerator, those things like that aren't a problem, because we can-
We make money off of it.
We pay money on it.
We made, I think, I'm glad we made thirty grand last year.
But massive citizen, whatever, you know, and cook and-
When you're-
Tables and chairs.
When you're looking at silver and-
And a lot of that's generated not by county citizens. You know what I'm saying, we got contractors flipping in, we got city coming in. So, there's a whole variety, we're paying for that at home.
That, that's, that's a lot, don't you know? We're, I'm paying a hundred and forty dollars. All right, now, I've got a place on my farm where I burn all our bins and salt out of empty trees in the yard. So, I'm all yard trash out, burning it all, so. But there are folks that for that hundred and forty dollars, they take a lot of limbs and couches and can now run out and drink. And it's costing the taxpayers this kind of solid waste, because it's fifty dollars a ton. When you're actually, your hundred and forty dollars, three tons, you owe, you owe special care.
I see. Now, they ever intended for yard trash to go on that landfill, because you know that.
Yeah, I, I do.
Long time ago.
Okay, the C and D you were supposed to get you, look.
Well, what, all we looked at is with the budget, we have to get creative to figure out how to generate some money. And that's, that's why we looked at reducing the C and D or charging for and yard debris to bring the money in.
Right, and so, it wasn't a, this, I'm not trying to say, oh, well, this is a new problem, our personnel services. I just want to remind the board, going back to our original conversation, that that's not going, you know, that is just the cost of doing this.
That's not going, but, last week, we passed, y'all, with coming back, and I know that you both, um, I'm sure you've spent a lot of your, your time, and I appreciate that, so what, y'all, tell us what you come up with.
Well, what you got to try, it's just a breakdown exactly, kind of looking at it, what, what we're, what we're up against part of. It gives you a breakdown exactly of what, you know, household garbage, what we're taking. All this is what we're taking right now. And it's, the problem, like I say, is we're getting hammered by multiple loads, we're getting hammered by contractors, people in the city and everything, and like Mr. Page said, uh, you're paying for it, I'm paying for it. And I don't know how many times I've done with landfills hauling off a large debris. And for some reason, people are, have took advantage of this over the years. And with that budget itself, solid waste, we could, the funding, the hundred and forty, isn't maintaining the cost of that, you can't hope that. So, the only thing that I can see to get creative on is, uh, stop the charge of the C and D that we are absorbing at a high rate. And if you look at the debris and the solid waste, the C and D, like I say, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, if we were to reach that this year, we would have been in really great shape. And it's a lot of working while to make that work, it's not gonna be easy task. And we're gonna have to properly get real creative doing this. And there, there'll be some glitches along the way, and there's going to be some people irritated. And, and probably a lot of us are going to be the people that are abusing that.
Yes, we are, that'd be the first.
They're the first ones to be, you know, irritated by it. I think taking the pickups out, you know, the yard debris and all that, would be a good start on that. I think that would show people that everybody's trying to work with them in the yard, but what, and that's good.
That pickup truck, a lot of people got two boxes of pickup, they don't haul yard trash.
And that ain't even hurt nothing.
Uh, uh, one, one truck, one, half, one truck of limbs, with, with what I recently, that's a pickup.
Yeah, that's-
And all of them can get rid of that. What's your, what, what, what do you, what can you make work, Gary?
I think, I think I can make this, I can do it on paper, I think I can do it in steel. And when I say that, if we look at charging for C and D and debris, uh, at the roll-off site, and it's gonna be, we're gonna have to deal with volume, and we may have to do it by individual, right?
Well, um-
Versus a chat off of it.
Right, so, um, I made a call today to Dixie County, um, and spoke with the assistant county manager, who was extremely helpful and informative. And also shared that they were facing some issues in Dixie County, because their assessment is a little bit less than ours is, and has not been raised in a number of years, while their costs have continued to go up. So, um, he, what they do there is they have a transfer station. And he was explaining to me how they charge, and he mentioned that they, they went to certified scale to stay within auditing guidelines. And which made me think, well, what are the auditing guidelines for what we are suggesting? So, I called Danielle Wells in finance, she reached out to our auditor, and he reminded us of a Florida state statute that reads that we need to collect based upon the volume of waste of solid waste. So, we cannot charge by a fifteen-foot trailer. That is not going to, we're going to have issues with our audit if we do that. So, what we would have to do is, on top of invoicing, we would have to ask our, our roll-off site employees to actually measure the amount of debris in the trailer. So, they will have to go to measuring tape and measure the-
Like with, by, by, and it's, it's, it's silly talking, but it ain't really that hard to do. I mean, I can do it, you know, three or five days.
But you feel okay about that?
I, I do, I think, I think, uh, our hardest areas, like, I call them, we got two guys, they're all, you know, they overlap on shifts and stuff like that. And, uh, I think that, that, and probably Air Two Blue, and probably Seating Ashes. And we got good people there, so they could probably, it wouldn't take long to catch on.
Uh, Air Two Blue, but thank word, won't be a problem, you know? Uh, Harrison Blue, but thank word won't be a problem, you know.
Yeah, but back into the thing, come with C and D.
Four yard bins, trailers, trailers.
Are you saying any trailer with anything on it, or just?
Anything already put aside.
Right. Yeah, are you including furniture?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Everything, except for yard waste. If, if a trailer, uh, truck comes in with the C and D, we're gonna let them dump anything instead of pickup.
But what about char, charred load, uh, limbs and sticks and leaves and, then that's no charge for that?
If it's on a trailer, it is.
Well, see, I don't want to say that. I mean, I, I, I.
Cause we're talking the contract, remember now, we're yard trucking the contract, it's me.
But I just don't want to charge people hauling off their.
Well, with the pickup, they can haul it in the pickup.
But see, anybody that has people.
Well, how about, how about Gary asked us, the pickup was no more than eight foot. And no charges for that. And eight foot trailers and pickup and yard debris. No charges for that. Everything else, multiple trailer loads, C and D, uh, lawn trailer and leaves, pardon?
One load of logs, one same price, one load of leaves?
The same price. What, what we have to pay. If, if, if it's mixed, it goes to Austin, we say this. Now, the thing we get from Austin here is it's not really fair to do it by volume, because you got a hundred of logs, and you go to Austin, that's more common.
But I don't think we can.
Well, we can, we go out of them. We can't watch everybody throw every couple of in the dump.
But we do a pretty good job at the roll-off side. Wasn't a lot of the contamination we get over, when they come at night, when they throw bags into the, when they're looking for stuff in the dump, uh, container at night. I hear from who he'll say again, well, you know, you see the fans in the bathroom.
I, I've just gone for the town, I want this one to have a known, um, charging people for their yard stuff. I'll care if it's a pickup truck or if it's a ten-foot trailer, if it's there. And I, and they got a big, I think they come from, uh, they thought for, I'm sure, that's for me, it's real different.
And what you're getting is multiple, multiple loads. We've got people bringing in five, eight loads of limbs a day, and generating.
And if it's tall, eight foot tall, and an eight-foot long trailer.
They'll, they'll take, they'll figure it out, trust me.
But if that, what, can you cover the whole, the, the C and D?
Where, most of them, you saw a ton of eighty thousand last year on that.
I, I really feel like it's a combination of all these factors that are, that how this where we are.
Uh, um, let, let, go ahead. On limbs alone, just with hauling incinerators, if you think about it, we haul four hundred and three forty-yard containers last year in February, February, I'm having, just.
Yards and yard trash.
Four hundred and three. Imagine your truck, you know, your driver, and, and, uh, what's the time to burn it, and it's a loss.
That's why I wanted to point, that all the people that have been, uh, giving their opinion about going up fourteen dollars on their annual salary, all they got sitting, if we go along with them, by the time they take two big trailers, they don't pay no fourteen dollars.
They don't pay no fourteen.
And, and, and so that kind of bothers me.
But what they, what a lot of them do is what Malcolm does and Jim, I do, I burn it in the backyard. I got it, I just throw it out.
Oh, they, they can start, good and dead, they can't, same.
They could, but I've got people in my district, and I've, I've met a couple of y'all there that, they're older, and they have somebody that comes by when they have a storm or routine maintenance, and they pay them to clean up their yard and, and to, um, and, you know, to haul it off. They don't, they're not able to fill up a trailer and take it down there themselves.
That's, that's yard trash, that's free.
It's yard trash.
Yeah, it's yard trash, free, up one, from a trailer door.
Right, we're all fine.
But if, but if, but a commercial thinks that we can hide that in a set. We have an assessment on a home that's one forty. Y'all could have an assessment on RVs and trailers that thirty-five dollars.
Not thirty-seven.
Okay, so maybe, or.
I'm sorry, forty. Or we can do forty, okay?
One, I don't agree raising the assessment on, on what, on a homeowner's.
At all, at all, at all.
Raising your assessment for your RV, goes from forty-seven, well, you ran it off, forty-five, or what's it, seventy dollars. If we have a designated site with a scale, this problem will keep to exist for the next twenty years.
Yeah, if you made two, well, if you did one in town and one in St. Hatches, you, and just, that's for all the C and D and limbs go, and you run it across the scale.
You would be in top of the surplus in one year.
Oh, yeah, you're right. And you, you talk about going up six, up six percent on the, on the RV, yeah, I could support that.
So you, you maintain what we have on a homeowner's shit at one forty, like one forty-three, you change it.
Yeah.
Take your RV at seventy dollars.
Yeah.
Now, that's gonna help alleviate a portion of the problem.
That probably generate, I was going on notice, that generate the thirty thousand loads.
Okay, now, if you build a site, a designated site with a scale, a pace system, that is gonna help alleviate the fee part of the problem, because it's a multi-issue, it's not just one clear part of the problem. There's, there's like three different angles involved. If we did those two angles, that would generate surplus.
Well, and if you look at the list I generated a couple, like a couple times ago, there's not one county that takes C and D, uh, forty yard waste, they just take household garbage.
They do, they do that, come back, again, there are lots of people that are living in RVs. And I'll tell you, they're generating more garbage than I do when I'm there just very few nights from us down at the beach. They're, they're, they're living there, they're generating as much garbage as I do at home. Why should we give them a break just because their home is long? They're gonna have to save a mountain of garbage.
They got a kitchen, and their trailer's just like, you gotta.
And so I don't agree, I mean, I, you know, we, we agree, we, we can agree, that's okay. But no, I, I, I may, I think this is, I'm, I'm.
All right, let, 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 let me check.
Yeah.
We talked about solid waste. In that, but I, I got a word, some of it.
And all of them.
And all of them. You know, when it comes to a point in time when you gotta quit talking, and make it a kitchen. Now, we've heard here tonight, if we do the RV thing at a hundred percent, just leave the, uh, part alone as we study, because you sat in your area and you fixed them up, we can come back and leave it. Then that would make us horrible, quote, at least, that would generate more than a hundred thousand dollars, just the RV part of. And the only hangout, what I've got with the city part, is I wanna agree with our chair on the yard trash. We got a lot of old people that need to, you know, get their yard trash. He's just missed the RV part of, that caused our problem for a while. And, you know, I've got, since everybody in the county's gonna, they'll get their stuff to the, to the roll-off side. So, I'm really gonna make a motion in our next meeting, to do, just do the RV part of.
Well, just tell us a little bit about the amount, but tell us what you're thinking, so that we can be, see if we're all in agreement, so that we can probably, you know, do like that.
Well, let me add this too, before you go into further time. If you could look at it too, would help us too, it's a multi-load, like when the guy brings it, I don't know how to switch that, but if you could have any ideas on how to switch that.
Well, if the RV is a hundred percent. And, I, how would you recommend you handle the multiple loads?
I don't know, unless, like, if you're talking about, um, a homeowner generates this amount, you know, degree or whatever. I, I don't see a homeowner bringing in five loads a day, or eight loads a day, or eighteen-foot trailers. So if we basically set it up where if they bring a skirt aside, and they're gonna bring in one.
One, one, one trailer load a day?
They won't, they, what they'll do, they're gonna pull your side. They know that, if they know they got one on my side, they're gonna fear one of your side, and they're gonna fear one of, and that's, that's.
And, and I would like to think everyone here is agreeing with that.
Yeah, I don't wanna do, for me, as one commissioner, I appreciate, you know, you, you bringing that, uh, don't get me wrong, but I, I've not ready to, to do that yet. I, I bet the simplest thing would be to, um, charge the RVs, and I, I'll let you include it to hunt and camp.
Well, I mean, there's no way, there's no way to park that out, that I know of.
And so let's see, let's, let's track that, and, and, um, give us a report at, at maybe every three months or six months or whatever. Uh, or if you need it before then, you see that it's not working, you come anytime, and tell us. And, and let's just make it simple for right now, and time.
Yeah, let's move it, let's move it slowly on.
I think we tried long enough.
Well, uh.
Give you all the nerve and the nerve to ask your RV, you go get the bag?
I'm fine, we'll keep them at the one forty.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. I got, I'm gonna run into a lot of people in my district, talk to them about this. You know, talk, and we know them, uh, talk to them. And they didn't want more than one forty, most of them, and a lot of them, they said they'd say one seventy-five, if, if we needed it, you know, they, they didn't care. But the thing is, they all told me that them trailer loads, that that stuff comes in that dump, they see, they see them people coming up there. They, you know, they'll, they'll go to dump, see a trailer load being unloaded, they're gonna shovel things down there on that thing, come back, and, and see another one, and, you know, and, you know, it's a sound, they come home from work to see another one, and a lot of them complained it. They, and, and the tenders, I mean, I've seen it over and over my life. I forward the trailers as they unload them, I put over there, and I left, waiting for them to leave, and I follow them back into the sea. I mean, I mean, it's just, I mean, and, and if somebody, the person that was unloading, wasn't the person that lived in that house, was it back there to get another one? I mean, we got to get a hand on the trailers and truckloads of limbs and tops and everybody. Tire, I call the car, I'm loading a whole truckload and a trailer load of tires. He had his whole crew, and he's a tire dealer, he had his whole crew throwing them over the fence just for dogs, and put them in the tire, you know, you know.
But we, we did refund it back for that. We, we have a refund.
We, we have to take tires.
Well, I mean.
Right.
You gotta buy a tire in the tire. You get your money back out of tires, don't you?
We get, we got it right.
But then, that trailer got three dollars a piece when he had, when he sold his tires, you know. So, I mean, that's another thing. I'm, let me go back one more. I'm fine with a one forty, and I'm, I'm fine with making everybody equal with a one forty. You know what I mean? And RV, that's an RV, because I've got RVs in my district, seven or eight people live there, and one of them lives in backyard, it's an RV, and they all got a kitchen. And I've, I've got four people in my district that's got, they got trees and oak, they cut oaks and vines, and they're front-coming to the dump just like I do. You know, I cut down two pine and three cherry trees the other day, and filled three dump trailers load out inside a tree. Three dump trailers.
Well, you can't.
I carried them to my farm, and dumped them up, so that I'm gonna burn them up there at my farm. So I, if, if that none of that, I carry them, I had to carry them to green deal, because, I mean, I don't, you know, anybody's dump load is a dump lot.
Well, the dumpster, we would have carried them to green deal.
That's right. You know, I mean, well, we got to, we got to get on, we can't keep talking about it. I'm gonna talk about it, and talk about it.
I think we all, here, I just got one place we get it. I've got, on the northeast corner of Canyon River, I, the crossroad, I got two landhouses, and there's three or four RVs that I don't use. Haven't used them at one time in six months. I can put a weight for the box there, okay, that's on the roof. I put one there behind the post office, I put one there, I put one on the other side. So I'm just, I don't think it divides my property of the road. I should be able to put one weight for the box, but I'll take care of my own as long as it's contiguous property. Does that, does that, does that make sense, Gary?
I, I can do it now, three, I put in three boxes by the roof, it's what I go with it, mine's limbs, I don't need them.
So what I feel, I haven't gotten it from you.
I said, you gotta, this on your property, and, you know, they'll, um, here's, they got three, four houses and three RVs that he's got a box that they take, weight for it, they get it. And that's, 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 that's in the rules, I think.
If I'm, if I thought it's in the rules, yeah.
Then, because I'm, it's not, it's not my business, you know, it's commercial.
Gary, Gary's got a good point. If we had a set of tail, and brought some tail, five, and had one in St. Hatches, that would eliminate all of it. Because when somebody knew they loaded the trailer family, they had to go to the scale, they wouldn't be calling down on you or me or anybody else. If they would take, that would eliminate, that would, that would be contractors and everybody else to use that scale. I mean, and I know the scale is expensive, but we, uh, you see, we, we got to get a hand on it.
Well, maybe if we, if we go up and everybody pays one hundred and forty, maybe we can afford a box with skill. Text us out in six months, we hide guns, if we got some of that money, maybe we have money to buy skills there, if that's what we want to do.
Right, I, I did.
They're just dropping off into it all at one time.
Well, we, we know how many cameras there is, once they've got power up to them, and then you got about two hundred more. They don't know about the shot power up to them in people's backyard, if you're running a core.
I've had a bag before ever, that's, can't solve those, that's a big deal.
Oh, I know. Mark Wiegman told me there was seventy cameras in one side of the trailer camp, seventy, I don't, can't find them. And he's gonna, me and him gonna get together, and they gonna go show it to me.
And they can't get to the roll-off side, that's bomb, that's bomb, they'll throw wind, they'll say it's over there, yeah. They have to, it's, it's.
Okay, so on this, what, what do you, what you got, just, for the board's consideration?
I will say that when I spoke with the neighboring counties, it's the same issue. Um, they're physically constrained, they're facing the same exact problems. And it did give me some comfort, because I realized this, this is, this is an issue. But, um, I know that, I was told today that when they did put in a transfer station, it worked very well as far as generating revenue. They do take half or set at the site, it's not all of, you know, it's not multiple sites, it's just that one site, and they're able to stay within auditing guidelines, it's very important to them. And it worked very well until the hurricanes started hitting. And then they started putting C and D containers back at the roll-off site, and now they're, they're facing the same issues we are. So it's, it is complicated, and they're, they are looking at several different ways to work through the issues. So I don't know that one approach is, you know, self-persecution, right, right?
Let's try all the RV things first, and then we'll, then in six months, we'll see how that's doing. Our church is exempt, pardon? Our church, our church uses theirs, and this will be.
We give, we give churches a permit. We give churches a permit. For their to take.
For their to take. And ours can play for.
Need to weigh further, yeah, but we talked about, I thought we thought we need to get one, a way further, our church to be, we, we generate a lot of.
Figure the damage out, uh, we, no. But I want the agenda then, for next, for June on the eighth, um, when I have him told Gary, and I think that, um, maybe it's with, is it with consensus of the board that we're gonna read it at one forty and charge everybody the same, give them a little bit of time, give you a form, we're gonna have analysis going on all the time. And if it's not working soon, then say six months or whatever, then we can readdress it immediately, so we have to start longer. And so is that, is that dual?
We want to speak to what it, what we found in our research about the, the ordinance for, for hack camp.
For hunt and camp, right.
We can't just pass it, the board just can't pass the regulations.
No, 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 hunt and camp, right.
Yes, so.
I thought they were just gonna do RVs, right?
Right, but the RVs are tied to.
RVs are tied to hunt and camp. Now, with hunt and camp, through RVs.
Well, the, the hack camp are tied to the solid waste ordinance that charges for one forty. Well, the, the hunting camp are tied to the solid waste ordinance that charges the one forty, so it's a third of whatever, right.
All right, so, what you're saying, now, I remember what we talked about is that, um, with respect to, um, the RVs, I think you can do that by resolution. But, if you're concerned about that being a problem with regard to hunting camp, why don't we just do a, get to an ordinance? And, you know, just because we have the ability, our God's ability, just thinking by resolution doesn't say that you can't do it live for them. You see, and you can, you can get both of them at the same time. RVs and hunting camps are now one forty or whatever it's uh, the, not a lot of that. But, so, you would instruct, um, my office, something on July the eighth, to repair an ordinance, raising the assessment for RVs and hunting camps to one forty.
Now.
Now, if you'll put that on here, let's for Thursday.
Yes.
You know, we can do that at that time too, at the same time we're doing the, or the other one we were gonna do, the, the C.
For the, um, incinerator.
For the incinerator, and the C for the incinerator, which we were gonna need blank, 'cause they were gonna turn on a piece of incinerator, okay?
And then, I need your opinion, do we need to, um, agenda repealing the ordinance that sets the fee for C and D? Because, you remember, at the last, at the last meeting, there was discussion of what is in our codified ordinance, and it's fee for C and D. When we researched it, it appeared that back in two thousand and five or sometime, that when the assessment was raised to the one forty, that the ordinance setting the fee for C and D was not revealed, since that's why that is still in the code.
Yeah, okay. Well, but then on, on this, can you get, we're gonna, 'cause I, well, Gary's already said that C and D is a problem.
And, and would the, would the, would the scale allow that C and D problem?
The scale, like Sean said, I think the scale, like, Conversor never knew, I think everything stopped at that point. I mean, there's no gas work involved, I mean, you pull up, there was a trailer load to pay that. And they, I, I didn't mean to go over, I really didn't know how they functioned, she found out today. And I thought I might ride over there one day and walk through and see what they, the scale and see exactly what they have going on. I've never been over there, I don't know. Take a, take a, take an experience from everything.
I guess, what is the cost to put in a transfer station along with scales? What is that whole operation cost to put it?
I'm, I'm not sure, it depends on the location, like, you didn't call them, it's already established with the DEP. And we can still utilize the, the, all the hills and everything like that, oh, really, it's already there. The people would still have to handle, unload everything, all we would do is just make that one area there to make that work.
Do you just have to purchase a scale, a stand?
Scale, a pole.
That would be all.
Well, there'll be software, because what you would have to do is generate, take an employee, we have to have a way to generate an employee. But I think that's, I don't think that's.
I'll tell them, just follow the test scale, couple over a hundred, we already had concrete steel infrastructure, we just had to replace it.
I think, seeing how you, I think we cleaned out the back, we would have enough room.
We can take a river to see that.
Yeah, you know.
And we got a river about ninety inches wide.
I, I don't wanna, you know, with something that's a wheel, it's not, oh, you know.
Now, I can go to Conversor and talk to them exactly, you know, what was.
What you were gonna do, though, if you were going to, to, to raise the assessment, see how that gets re-evened, decided, and put it on the scale, yeah.
Well, we got one, we got a couple commissioners that wanted to scale, but what I'm saying is, but we don't even know what that cost is, to get that operation in, so. Um, I'm still, we're gonna do it for one forty for everybody, give it some time, that will generate some money, find out how much it costs, and if that's what we're gonna do, then, then it's six months from now.
Well, that, that six months, then, is what's all the mess. We keep putting things off six months, and it turns into another six months, and we've talked this to death. I know we can't buy a tail without knowing what they cost, and what it's like, well, I understand that. But if the C and D is the issue, and you got to have tails for slaughter, we need to work in that direction as soon as we can.
I got the solution. Gary?
Tell us, I'm getting them off.
All right. Well, you already got the hunting camp, probably, let's use the word RV, you got that, hundred, hundred and forty dollars. Now, we'll put in two sets of scales, one to see that, and one to score, or somewhere in the middle of the county. Provided that you let all the citizens in my district and town continue to carry in their yardways and dump it in their dump. And don't make them go across the scale. Don't make our way, and I'm not Catholic, not church.
How many loads is that?
And there's how many people are gonna be, I don't know.
Well, what, what do we have to happen? How do we have to have the gentleman, what, how many loads?
How you gonna know they're not Conversor, working for me, I can hire somebody to take my trailer load and carry it to your side?
Right.
I said, where is the scale? I mean, that's what I would do, I'd say.
We can't be, oh, love them, love this trailer, love this trailer, be sure to get them out and done, you know, you're gonna have to pay them, I don't know.
And what you're looking at, last year you haul four hundred and three loads of debris, vegetation.
Well, you know, a transfer station, now, fifty, ten would go in, and they come and just along the course of it, what's the, you know. Looks like a transfer station, the way you know.
We made it, we're on our first set to talk.
Yeah, Mark, we subsidized them all.
Fourth full fair, you know, another way.
And one, I want to rest that too. Now, I need to hear it, that we subsidized Dixie County, forty-four thousand, mother, was told only do that for three years.
That's right.
Now, we're supposed to be, I think, I think, we're supposed to live that until the end of the world.
Jack Ramsey.
And also, Jackson County subsidizing them to a lesser level. And originally, Madison County doesn't have to subsidize, and the image was when the legislature was created, Madison County agreed to be the host county. And there were excuse from the Dixie County, it's like you're a pit camp. Right. Now, well, why don't I?
I don't understand that.
Why, why don't I go get sort of Dixie County, but their transfer station, just get an idea of what, maybe they can give you some idea of what's going on.
What I would say, we went to Huntsville, Alabama, we went to, uh, I think it's all been enjoyed. They were doing that same thing, uh, they were saying, we, it's a little hard to come to, you know, come to grips with what we need to do. It's all complicated. Well, it's, and nothing's complicated about putting C and D and, and you can't carry it to Langford. And then somebody sat on a chicken house, and you, and you bring ten loads to the, raw. And nothing's complicated about that, that, you know, they didn't stand down, ten feet down, back, you can sit down, then now, you got same problem.
George, you said about a job up here right quick, y'all.
You say what I, what C and D?
Well, I've been talking about it.
But I, but I did talk to one person.
Slowly to this problem.
I thought one fellow, he said, we need to go ahead and get back those dogs, yeah. Pretty young, you know, something good. I pay fourteen dollars a month, and I pay six dollars a month, you see, that's twenty dollars a month. The RV, you got twenty dollars a month, and they're gonna go in the county, we wouldn't have a problem. But we're allowed to go up to fourteen dollars, I make fourteen dollars a year, that's a dollar and a quarter a month.
It's, when you do the one forty, does it one fifty-four?
Yeah, I don't do nobody in the world, but, if you got five, you're living in the house, and you charge a dollar and a quarter, that's like forty-five, fifteen. You know, and I'm asking you going up, but when you do math, it's real simple, and I have sent that story to you, I didn't even send you anything, five. I did one, you know, if you got a trailer on. I'm here, see, all of my women, I mean, if someone would ring you, you would let you come over and dump a quarter a month.
Uh, that's a good, that's a good point, okay. You know, we said last, last week, that we wanted, y'all bring everything tonight.
I appreciate it.
Um, and here we come up with transfer stations and scales, and we don't know any of that yet. But I'm saying, on June the eighth, we need to vote on something. We should've already had that explanation tonight to consider, we don't have it. But, on June the eighth, we need to make a decision, for we've got hundred square scales at the location, or any of those having at the location, we need to vote on it.
I'm for that, I'm fine with that.
Let's nip it in the vote.
You're right.
Number six, the ones to discuss special projects.
Let me back up for one second. Gary, if, if we not get an estimate to put in a transfer station from weight throw, I'm sorry, I just remembered that.
What they were talking about is taking five acres, that's not already DEP approved, and they have to pour eighteen inches of concrete, footing and all, all kinds. And it was one point five million for them to build that facility.
So, the cost to make one of those roll-off sites, a transfer station, is basically the cost of the scale?
I would think so. I can call DEP Jerry over there, and Jackson will talk to him a little bit. We're handling the same product as the roll-off site, I don't see any difference, only thing we're putting in is a scale on, maybe on the end to get through there. I don't see a lot involved past that, 'cause it's gonna be the same, they put it in a container, we haul the container, that's also, it's the same thing. A, a scale top on the, on the.
Is that helpful? And also, put back in the corner that honey would come on, probably it come on, if we bought scales next, probably it come on.
I would, I would say.
Well, we don't have an answer for that tonight. Correct, but next week, well, come out, we need to know the answer. Just to help us, so we can at least, so we can help y'all make a decision and move on, that's all that's easy. I appreciate the work you've done this week. Y'all work hard, and I appreciate what you've done.
Lots of good.
Sure is. Okay, the ones to discuss, special projects.
Yes. Uh, the reason this was placed on the agenda was, if you recall, at the last meeting, um, we, there was a public hearing to discuss the, the middle of a FERDA grant application for, um, for the sports complex. And the board gave a direction on that, but we have to hold a second public hearing before we prepare an application for a FERDA grant. So, from what I recall, the suggestion to the commissioners was, um, to provide any additional input to, for a second FERDA grant application, or really, any other application of any per, special project that you would like considered.
Okay, and I, and I also have recommended that, um, each commissioner, if you've got a special project in mind, that you wanna do something, to bring it forward. Has, you know, I've already disclosed, I've got a project, and I hope everybody does, and I'd like to see a renovation of, um, Hutton Park. It's our only beach, public beach, that we've got in this county, and, um, it's used a lot, and I think that our citizens deserve better than what they find when they go down there. So, we're gonna sign a, a funding source?
The FERDA would be the funding source?
No, no, no.
Block three?
No, tell us about that over, um, well, there's a, um, a, um, there's actually several. There's the Florida Community Trust Grant Application, and then the, um, sorry, the, the coastal initiative, um, applica, a grant would be something that would be helpful. Um, Coca-Per, EPI, excuse me, um, would be a fun, a possible funding source for that.
Oh, you get it.
And we already have.
Right, right, from.
We already have funding too, that, uh, could be earmarked, yes. So, um, you know, I just feel like for the public, this would be a good, a good thing, so, um, anybody else?
Yeah, I have one. I think I missed this, we were forward, a little gal team, they be talking about a, a quarry.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I was coming back from Orlando the other day, I stopped through O'Callaghan, went through O'Callaghan. And there was a nice, and they get built, uh, Hampton, a quarry, a quarry. And then when I called, talked to people in town, actually, they have three. And I didn't know whether we could talk to the city, and get the city to hook you on with us, and do, and, you know, if we gonna do all the outline areas, and then you're in the city center of town, you don't do anything, it's pretty rough. So, I, and I don't know why I'm twenty, Tom, but me enough, I'm not sure. I'm sure that we can get together to get some grants accomplished, and start from there.
I, I, I'm gonna blow about here next tonight.
But a quarry, yeah.
A quarry, yeah. Tell them what that is.
A swimming pool, look, you have, uh, people go out there to swim, and then, certainly, you have old folks go out there and swim at the time and stuff.
Yeah.
And the young girl, and young gal we talking, she said, uh, Mr. Tom, we don't even have a swimming pool that you gonna learn how to swim. Say, if you're talking about the beach tonight, if I go down on the beach, I don't know how to swim, I probably gonna get wrecked. So, she said, well, you stay out, keep swimming a little bit. I said, no, we showed them out there one reason, I'm not about to take them to the lake.
Oh, shit, did you say like down south, La Belle, as well?
Well, we, we, plenty of that, go, go.
We had two, we had two, and one out down there, and one over there by the river, Tom.
Yeah.
Still in one of the rocks, didn't it?
Well, we go, we open, we open, now, some plants down there.
That's one of the rocks.
Yeah, we filled it up the rock, so we got a rock. Well, if you work with a lot of that, if I, if I may understand, when I don't count hand, yeah, I call the one, and I don't feel like that anymore now, but, it's, it's been, been.
That's the word I think, and, and you're not running O'Callaghan, it's been.
Is that one of the, uh, you know, I'm just kidding, um, um, but, I wanna go back to put this down the road. I know it's been talked about over there, Mama was on Big Island, you know, it'd be easy.
Well, hey, look at, I was there, I was there. And I didn't destroy, I wasn't there, when they told me I wasn't there, but when you were there, oh. Engine in front by the jackal, there for me. I thought it was gonna give us a job. But I thought it would've lasted a hundred years, but it wasn't a hundred years. But he put over there the food on the north end of town, I was licking over there. When that one was there. And it took me.
That's right.
I, I know, we had beautiful.
I could pass it by, couldn't go.
We had wonderful, we had wonderful, why did they call us?
Well, there was a food pool there, wasn't on two of the streets.
Uh, you could pass out those, the kids go in.
You'd better not. So, we talked about this, you know, and I don't worry about that, but are you worried about today? What are we gonna do about today? And I mentioned it one time today, it'd be, one, kid go, we built a nice thing. Go down, see, we got all kind of, we gonna come to see pot three and pot two, and we gonna do dining down there, or be on these side, we got. Well, if, we gonna build over there.
You're right.
We gonna be attacking them, the only thing that'll risk, Jersey. And it's getting bad shit, isn't it?
You ever get that bathroom fixed over there?
Must be working.
I'll say something for a minute, yeah, say something. When we started our boys and girls club, you know, we, we just. Come up here, we went here, we all home, sure.
Yeah, I was in that boys and girls club, six, we was six.
You know, we were, we were little kids, when we picked up the building, um, in Jersey, that was the old man's building. And I personally, so I work here, and a lot of friends of yours, they came and, and they were wonderful, you know, thank you, ma'am, personally, and your fans, all the people who did to help us. It was neat that we had a pool on that corner. And the reason, the reason of pools is because, uh, they aren't giving them up. And you have to maintain anything, anything that you have, that must be maintained. And it really is important, because we started our boys and girls club in nineteen eighty-nine, ninety, we have fifteen years. We have fifteen hundred kids. And, um, Mr. Art, that I think, I'm sorry, I'm, I said it sometimes, the founder, and, and director. And then a lot of those kids are able to be on same team and go to meet and, and it's a wonderful sport. My old, my Bobby Dan, he's in that, and Phil and working, he's a big winner and he helped us. If you build anything, and you visit the town, anything that you have, you have to maintain. You have to fix it up, and if you don't do that, you lose it. And so, I would urge you to build something off an aquatic spinner, they follow a dumb nut, play the tall heads, it's a big jealous area, the kids playing with pots and things, and they have a deeper area. It's, it's, it's a wonderful thing, it's, it's great. And our kids, I know we work for our Boys and Girls Club, so the kids haven't been to Boys. They haven't been to the beaches. And, and you know, and life is a little bit heartbreaking. First thing we do is to be difficult. So, so you have to, i- if you wanna have those things, you have to make them happen. Once you make it happen, then you have to fix it up. And, and I would, I would just really urge you to do that. And I, I wonder, I- Teach your people not to destroy it, turn it, there's a lot of trouble with them. You have to teach people. You know, you build something, and as, and people will come along and then offer to carry it up. That's, I know that's in, in schools, it's an issue too. You really have to have any, any, and you have, I, I know, we work for our Boys and Girls Club, we have beautiful, yeah, with someone, I made a, and I was going around. When, but, then, then one day, I, I came up there and someone had come up and breaking everything. And done all his vandalism, and that was when I discovered, I went to Ace and I said, what can I do? And they said, we have graffiti here. You know, but it seems it's a piano, they, they do it. You know, it's, it's always something, you're bad if there's a, you, things like that are gonna happen. What you hope you can, the priorities for children that are supported, where we found kids, life is different. You know, if you, if you maintain your boys and girls, put on first round of the inning. You know, first round of the people who have the vision, you know, can help us whenever we do all that, and that's fair to them. And so, whatever you have, if, if something bad's gonna always happen, but that's not, you, you don't, you do it anyway. You do it anyway. And we, when we started that area over at Druckett, um, sorry, that building, it's, but I love the new big building they can land out, it's wonderful. And now they're saying, thanks for taking. So, whenever we first started that, that big building over there, we had that lot in front, was completely covered in littered grass. And I remember going, I was painting my hand, I picked it up again and run off. But, when you have people like, you, well, some of you, all of you, you know, people with vision, if you have people with vision, just let them. And our, there's nothing more important than our children. And when you, when you save them lives, and whenever you introduce them to things they would never have otherwise. And they need to send their school, build it. And, and with the kids, the, the, people, families bring for us, not kids bring for us, they're beautiful families. Thank you for suggesting that. Anybody else? Okay? If not, we'll move to, uh, I have another thing that we, I wanted to discuss, uh, was the work to discuss growth management at St. Anthony's. If you recall, um, we were talking with the residents of St. Anthony's, when they were here, when we were discussing all that road closure and all the boat traffic and, and all the problems, and we said at that time, Commissioner Martin, remember, we said we would, uh, discuss growth management at St. Anthony's. So, um, I think that, you know, that we need to start a, we're trying to see what needs to be done and how we're gonna go about it. But, um, we didn't have problems down there, as you know, it's only gonna get worse.
We were, the logistics, uh, infrastructure, we need to look at it all. But there's gonna be, I think, about sixty to seventy years, St. Anthony's gonna be pulled off. Based on current structure we have.
That's right.
It's not silver, so.
Uh, even now, uh, from, from, uh, Keaton Beach to get through the other area. And, uh, everywhere out there, it's helped, uh, growth has had.
And it did help me out. I, I sat there and I looked at the view of this county, versus the view of last county. And it has increased in number. And we find that in the long run. This year, I, I just couldn't believe how many people are down there. You know, seeing like that, although if we, you use that panel, look ahead in ten years.
Yeah.
We'll have a thousand many people down there only.
Don't need to say that about that.
Now, and see, I'm not, I'm not familiar with, um, growth management. We've never had a problem with growth management. What the, I don't even know where you start, I'm assuming you start with parents, then you go to somebody, I mean, I have no idea.
Well, I don't know why, I think I could reach out to the North Central Florida, um, planning council and ask them for some technical assistance.
Well, that's good, that's, the pageant twenty-sixth year has predicted all that, you know.
Yeah, so maybe that, that's a good idea. And at least start on it, it'll take years, I'm sure, but, uh, you have to start somewhere when you've got a, a growth, it's gonna have a growth problem.
Well, and I think, um, Mr. Ken, he's just a, a wealth of information. So, if, if that agency cannot help us, then I truly think that he can put us in the right direction.
True, true. I don't think very much, we don't.
Yes, sir.
Let him know, he'll hold him. Um, the structure of that, anything, y'all? Yes.
You want to say words, still have?
If you wanna come up and you can, okay, I'll do that, because I'm, I'm talking. Now, can I mention one thing before I avoid giving you something about the bridge? But I wanted to mention first that we're talking about the RVs and the growth in St. Anthony's. It, it really is important with all these increasing numbers of RVs everywhere. They're sticking everywhere that they could possibly go. It really is important to charge, I believe that Mr. Murphy suggested two hundred seventy-five dollars.
Two fifty, two fifty.
He said fifty, he said fifty. He need to be at least that high, at least that high, because, uh, what, um, Pam did is exactly right. These people have, they're being several places on a tiny lot, and some of those lots, like the one next to us, for one time, they had three plants, it was, it was, it was, one of those acres on it. And, and what you need to do is, they're like, it's so much money, they're on the by paying those little fees. And they're just gonna sit there, and you're, you're here, and you don't know that they're still sitting there. And so, I would suggest you put the highest fees on you can, to really, to let them know you're in it. And, and so, the, the other thing is, I don't think it's anything there. Um, I ask you to please explain your experience with, uh, that, we're already in hurricane season. Uh, I think that it really is hard for people who live here to understand what it is like to have a hurricane in the surface which occurs. During the tropical storms and hurricanes, they, they quickly, quickly, often, why is it that the storms happen? It's, does it seem to you all that they usually at night? They come in like storms, into your charming light, late at evening. And then it comes in, and it really is much harder at night, but, but, to deal with it all, because it's because it's dark and you can't see anything. And if that weather block for any reason, like we can't flood our car, it could be anything, it could be branches, wind, you know, come in. The surge quickly reaches the sea wall, okay, you don't want to come in the sea. And I know my excellent neighbor, um, was in that, and he spoke to you, asked you times about this. He, he said that happened, it starts, what's happening up in the middle of the night? You have to get out of it. Someone mentioned recently about one of its pedestrian bridges, kill it out. Then in the blow, middle of the night, his white hand there, right side of the bridge, is empty peril for the landchildren. He's dead now, but his wife, the widow, has little children that, that come in. You're supposed to take little children and walk across the bridge at night, and walk the half a mile, three quarters, quarter of a mile up to the main dirt lane, and then walk on out to the road, really? You can't do that. And you can't take your vehicles, you'll lose your vehicles. Vehicles were lost in the last storm. So, the vehicles, all the vehicles were lost on the road. And so, you, we have got to have this done for public safety. And I don't even know why there's an issue, never before. One other time, this Yvonne was alive, and he built her a house, and she was the main one, he, you know, was just, just torn out for himself, so he built, bring a bigger boat in. But, the main thing is, and I won't say, is that if you have five foot deep surface in her hands, that is up here, that'll beat you. And you're trying to get out before it gets that deep, you're trying to get out before it gets this deep, you can still drive in that tunnel water. Just, I know some of you understand the problem, and some of you are getting there and understand the problem, and I understand it's not easy. But if you were out there, and I know Ken, you have a place that's a beach, you know, so, I mean- You know, y'all, this is really, I saw you right there, so, so calm yourself, but you've been here now a long time, and, you know, you, you told us, and you told us, and you told us, and, and we all get it. We're here, we understand, we understand everything that you're saying, and I appreciate your, your concern, um, I can identify with that. But we're gonna do everything that we can. If you come fifty more times, we're still gonna, we're still, if you come anytime you want to, if you don't know. But we're still gonna do the best we can, and we're gonna do it as fast as we can, and that's all that we can do, like, so, and, and that's, you know, we're supposed to do it next week, I wish we could have already done that. But, um, we're gonna do what we can. And we, and I think everybody here, we're here, we understand, and we're gonna do the best we can. Uh, thank you, I thank you so much, I know you're great.
Uh, I sent more pictures than what I presented before, and I just wondered if, if mine was right. The bridge. People may use it, go out and make that bridge, but this, this picture is taken a couple of weeks ago. And, um, it's about an hour fast, outside.
Just like somebody walking across it. Someone walking across-
Yeah, but, somebody walking across the bridge, same time, they were going, they were doing, then a pretty good sized bucket, just getting done on that bridge.
Yeah, that's pretty good sized bucket.
An hour fast, that's right.
You know, I, I, I've spent a long time thinking about this situation. This bridge is part of our county road system. And to look at what I see, because I can't see down under the water, I don't see why this bridge couldn't possibly be repaired. Well, I think it can. Now, if you, if you, well, Mr. Dudley had spoken and said, if the county goes in there, we'll do a repair. Then would they, that is to take out more than was good, which jeopardized this concrete bridge for about ten, fifteen years on the way. But I'm not opposed, I'm totally resistant to that. Absolutely. At once, I'm not opposed to the structure staff, my post, or if they were acting staff, to, to see what this contractor goes and talks about. What he can tell. Now, I do know enough about county buildings. It can't just go out of contract, because you got to have some work done, and that involves the executive, though, how long that takes. But, uh, well, we can do something to shore up the bridge and spend thirty, forty thousand dollars, I, I, I'll do it.
It could be done, it could be done, we need to copy all the reports that went to close the bridge in January. I need a copy of that.
Well, I'm gonna make it available to all of my workers.
To, to the ones that you want to bid on. Everybody, every contractor in the county is not qualified to do it.
Now, I know that that is important, and me saying what I just said. But in my heart, I really feel like that this bridge is part of the county road system. If it was in District One, I'd be glad to make that fix, get fixed. And to just say, we're not gonna do any of it, goes, this is, go up there and do your time, retire here. Now, I, I think they deserve opportunity to have a contractor take a look at it. And-
Now, I think if I can interrupt, before you-
You know, any further, please.
Please. Now, we are talking about something that would have to go out for formal bid. Okay? We would need a written scope, and I don't know that we can release that report, and it's checking for us, but that is not public information.
Thank you, compliment.
Yes, ma'am. But he is, he had said that he would check, but we cannot, according to our policy, we don't solicit quotes from one contractor on any, any quote really, except for a small amount of money with a verbal solicitation. We have to have a written scope of work. And for something of this magnitude, I would think we would have to go through the formal bid process.
Oh, I agree with that, I agree.
And so, we could just tell one contractor here that we have this bridge that needs to be fixed. That, that, that violates our policy, just to make it clear to everybody.
Right, there's a proper way to go about it, and our engineer has already stood here and gave us his professional opinion, uh, on, uh, what he feels like would be the proper way for this bridge to be fixed. And it would jeopardize, in his words, it would jeopardize what the state is willing to do later. I would like to, it is, I value what our engineer says, that's what we party for, that's what we have in here for, um.
He needs to be, you're saying he needs to be, he needs to contact all the people that were gonna bid on it.
Well, I mean, look, I, I want to add, he, his opinion is, from what I remember is that he felt like it was taking, in his professional opinion, it was taking a lot of money to fix this bridge, because he said he will not cut it off by it just to rig it up. It has to be done to certain standards, and when it's done to certain standards, then it no longer will fall into the category of the state putting in a nice concrete bridge.
And when I found out, it was from a contractor, he said, is that what that's the same thing? He said, for my company to be liable for our work, we'd have to bring that bridge up to state standard. And he said it's probably expensive, but he said, you cannot get it on track of work on that bridge at all without him being certified for the state, being built, you know, and, and, and doing it for the state. And he said, had it brought up to a certain standard, the, the state would have to approve.
Well, that, that report would, would furnish the details of what actually needed to be done.
Well, you could end up spending a couple of hundred thousand or more, and you have, um, then you probably jeopardize what the state would do in the long run. I thought that we were gonna look at making this a bridge that you could walk up, up, that's what we have.
We're walking over that.
The D O T is saying to us that if we kept it under three tons, it would not change our status to get another bridge in the future. So, no matter if it's a, they were cleaning up the water, we tend to repair this bridge.
I just wanna get your card, that's ridiculous.
At what D O T told us here.
Yeah.
Let me throw out the, ah, the-
Can I say one thing? I want to clarify that. Let me just clarify one thing. D O T said, when standing right there, whenever, they were standing beside Dudley. They said, we will help you fix it to a point, we will, that it will not be a problem, I'll be glad the, the report, it, it recorded. It will not harm your chances of getting a, the current bridge, but she said, Morgan said, it can be ten years down the road if you get a bridge. Okay, so it won't harm our chances, it's just a matter of, if, but if you, you know, sort of like the garden's saying, if you, if you don't pull ahead and just take the report and get the bid, because the owner said, Ken was Mr. Morgan, is an engineer with D O T, and he was standing up hot when I left that one. Because the young man, that came with Mr. Morgan, is an engineer at DOC and he was standing out front on our left that night. And he, when they were here, and I said, how much do you think it would take to fix the bridge so that it would be drivable for the three ton limit? And I believe what he said was fifty thousand or under.
Fifty thousand?
Uh, he said, it won't be, you can fix that bridge.
And I know that we didn't hear from our, if we need to hear from our engineer again, but, um, I think we need to follow up the directions of what our engineer is recommending. Um, so I'm not willing to spend a lot of money to repair this bridge under pressure from two people. Pressure is not going to make you change your mind.
We had over a hundred.
We have to do.
Single tour.
I have that.
Over a hundred.
So we want to have him to come back and we expect him.
I don't think it's necessary. If I can, you know, just, if you take one of them. If you can't, if you release the bridge report as a third, because it's confidential. And that's, it's not eliminated, having to go out and have a contractor do it. But is there a possibility that this could be released to this group of contractors?
That's what we're checking on.
Are we checking all that?
Yes, of course.
That's linked to a little bit of fault.
And I, I didn't, if I can say, I appreciate everyone's assistance as far as talking to contractors and talking about quotes. I just get concerned that we all understand what our policy says. And that we, that we may have to go out through, go through a formal bid process and we will check to see if we can release this report.
And no problem with that. Now, last thing I want to say. Ten years is a long time to live for a concrete bridge. And even though I thought we've gotten over the station, you should, you know, explain it otherwise to me. What, what we got is ready when you can walk across.
Correct.
But, and that's, it, it, it's just a situation that needs to be fixed. Now, they all have another option, I think of, is that the county identified some funds and go in there and build another wooden bridge.
And the contract.
That, 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 like you're losing your concrete, being your half of the bridge, can't use it now.
Correct.
And I've heard that you're three hundred thousand. Well, we got all this beefy money floating around out here. We talked to you tonight earlier about, that we don't need so much of that for both races. So, some of that might could be used. It's just called the, because, about the, you sang the, on water fun. Only five miles of that water fun.
Yeah.
And then the water fun. You pack, and pack it up. For the water fun.
I don't, I, I mean, and I don't know that we're placing, I don't, we can certainly check on that.
We can check on that, sure.
Placing that bridge does, does provide postal access. But even that, we would have to go through a process.
Is that by that can use?
Well, I don't think it would take that long. But I think that there would be a process. Now, if I recall, one of the possible solutions was to rebuild the bridge. Using our current, using public works.
Yeah.
But the concern is, we do not have the equipment needed to set the pace. We would have to contract for that out.
Right, okay.
And you are talking, I think the last figure I heard was at least a couple of hundred thousand dollars, or somewhere around there. Um.
Does it include hiring the?
Yes, sir.
I, I was thinking three hundred thousand.
And I think there was an, an additional fifty to remove the bridge and something like that.
So the question is, is that you won't spend two hundred sixty thousand, that are, probably fifteen, an hour and a half of waiting for a few years.
The top of the bridge is fine, it's, it's supported, if John did it, John is a professional engineer, my husband. The bridge has timbers that are ten inches by twelve.
We, we try and work it like that, oh, oh, oh.
And from the last report, they will not even allow golf carts on the bridge because of safety issues. They will allow pedestrian traffic only. So according to the engineering firm, who did the study, it's not, it's not public enough for a golf cart. And so that's what we're bound by. But it's only, it's only the, it is only the side of the buttresses, only side that need to be repaired and the dead men and the tables. The top of the bridge, and they told us, the engineer at D, DMC said, you can hold the double stack. You can hold the bridge top up while you're working on the buttresses below, you're repairing the buttresses, they're literally a seawall. And it doesn't have to cost the, of course, if you do it the right way and, and get the right people, you know, involved. This is, this is really important.
We've talked to our engineer, we've talked to them, we've talked to the board. And if you recall, uh, when we discussed it last time, if we did the bridge, how long is this bridge on?
Well, it was, it was like, I believe it's like fifteen.
About ten years. So then you're going to be looking in ten years to probably redo it again. But if that's going to be the rule of the board, then that would be the rule of the board. But, um, we could sit here all night and keep going over the same thing over and over and over and over, saying the same thing. Uh, so, so what is, what is your like?
I'd like for you to see when you have this bridge report made available to the contractor.
Okay.
All right, that's a place, a lot.
I think it's the free thing I could do.
Free thing I could do, and then, and then if they say no, can't do it, and I don't know anything else. I'll give it my best shot.
Well, thank you.
Well, that's a lot of the legislation. And get some foremen from state to go in and shorten up that ten year thing.
Well, the, 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 the agency made it very clear. They always want to tell, they will not, they said, take away our chance to have the bridge. Like, I had told the DOC and John, I went to Lake City and visited with them. What they, what they want is a smaller pool. A pool for the smaller bridges, so they're not competing with the bigger bridges. I have already talked to Melissa, um, to Amanda, I think, that's who I'm, but, um, anyway, I've already talked with them. I haven't talked with him yet, but I want to, want to see how they're going to deal. They would allow a bigger, a, a pool, a smaller pool for the smaller bridges, so when the money comes in.
We, 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 we understand that, we have your three minutes and what else would you have to say?
Okay, I was just going to say, I flicked in some, some old papers yesterday. And I found that, very news here on Friday and Saturday, May first and second, two thousand nine. The same problem came up before. And what is saved the bridge at that time was Dr. Mark Paramore, he was in, uh, four sixty grand to drive. And, uh, he said at that time, if the bridge is removed, there will be turnaround traffic in the driveway of the Riverside residence on Grand Drive. One of the people lived down there, said, somebody drove around, tried to go, go across that bridge, they couldn't. So he turned around in his driver and up to the gate down with a, with one of his RVs. They were, okay, the other thing I wanted to mention was, uh, another name that they gave us was Levy County. Levy County, I've been in touch with, they repair their own bridges in Levy County. And it, it's a pretty big county and, uh, uh, and I described the problem since the pictures too. They, they sent the administrative persons of, of road departments down there, together with the construction, uh, managers. And they, they could do it to the county, in fact, used to back, now it's a young man. They would come by the song, go there and get some timbers, they can build and they fix bridges all over the county. So, you know, maybe they don't do that anymore. But it could be done because other counties should do it, that's all that.
It was important, it was, there's a lot of these came over, fifteen hatchets.
We were turning our wheels. Thank all for coming.